Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Emily Baumann.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilman Wishart.
Here.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Here.
President McDermott.
Here.
Accordance is present.
Thank you. We will now begin tonight's meeting with one special announcement and presentation. Stand right back up from Carrie from our Westland Library.
Hi, my name is Carrie Frye. I'm the head of Youth and Teen Services at the Westland Public Library. And we're here today in order to promote the survey that we're asking all of Westland to take. The Westland Library is looking for community feedback and input on what kind of services we could provide for our patrons. And we're trying to develop a strategic plan for the next three years. So if everyone could scan the QR code in the lobby, or stop by the library, or go on our website, www.westlandlibrary.org, and right at the top there'll be a scrolling banner, and one of the choices is "Take the Survey." So we'd appreciate all of your help so we can get as much input as we can by the 15th of this month. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. All right. We will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from your city council. Comments on the agenda? Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Mr. Warren.
Good evening. Looking at item G. It seems to me that our Parks Department is already doing most of these work and items. They talk about recreating maps. I believe our Parks Department have maps. And our Park Department has held public meetings with the public. So it's just like a redo of what they're already doing for $30,000. So I'm just trying to figure out what could be done better than what the department is already doing? Because you added a person to the department. And to give McKenna Association $30,000 for what they're already doing, it just doesn't make any sense to me. I'm gonna give you one example. Kyle's come in with a budget for the new parks and the new equipment. So what could they do when the budget's already set with the American Rescue Funds to recreate our parks over the next five to 20 years? But they only have a five-year plan. And most of our park equipment lasts for about 20 years. And so that falls very short of that. Recommendations for improving the appearance of the park. The Parks Department already does that. And the citizens, we already do that. So I'm just at a loss of what they're doing because the Parks Department has already talked about the future projects and gave us an exact description of what's going on in those parks. And I don't know what the Department of Natural Resources can do any better because we started with two parks, Stata Martor and Kaylee Park. That park play equipment and the parking lots. And I also think that if there's anything that the DNR has, specifications and stuff like that, what prevents us from going getting those specifications and adhering ourselves to those specifications? Why do we have to pay $30,000 to somebody to get those specifications to redo them? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else on my right? Comments on the agenda? Anyone else on my left? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? There is a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Yes, Councilwoman. Is there support? There is a motion and support by Councilwoman Baumann, supported by Pro Tem Sampi, to move item G off the consent calendar. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Now back onto the consent calendar. Yes, Pro Tem.
Thank you. So I would like to move on the consent calendar, item J, which is the adoption of an amend master fee schedule pertaining to building and planning department.
There's a motion to move item J off the consent calendar by Pro Tem Sampi, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Item J is moved. Back to the consent calendar as amended. Are there any additional changes to the consent calendar? Any additional changes to the consent calendar? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Motion passes. Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. Thank you for that.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of lease of two cybersecurity devices for the Department of Innovation and Technology. City's cost will be $1,152 per month with a one-time onboarding fee of $5,457.90. Approval of bid for professional boiler replacement services project at the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center. Administration recommended the low bidder, A.J. Miller Mechanical, total amount not to exceed $157,059. And authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of bid for one engraving machine for the fire department used to make accountability tags and nameplates in-house. Administration recommended the low bidder, Western Engraver Supply Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $6,406. I'm sorry, mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of purchase of fitness room equipment for the Department of Senior Resources in an amount not to exceed $6,445. Approval of ARX Alert Core Subscription Renewal for the Police Department. Administration recommended the Soul Source Tyler Technologies for a one-year period in an amount not to exceed $32,277. Approval of Trend Micro Antivirus Platform Subscription Renewal through CDWG. The subscription will resume immediately, be effective for one year in an amount not to exceed $6,300. Approval of the Michigan State Subdivision Agreement for the Kroger Settlement related to ongoing matters involving opioid litigation. The projected amount the city will receive under the settlement payable over 11 years will be approximately $71,431.31. Adoption of Ordinance 198A5, an ordinance to amend the Westland Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, by amending Article 10 entitled "Fences." This item was introduced July 15, 2024. Last item approved on the consent calendar, adoption of prepared resolution recognizing Norway Citizens Council 1942 as a local nonprofit organization operating in the city of Westland in order to obtain a charitable gaming license from the state of Michigan. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion? Okay, motion by Councilman Hornbuckle, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business, item 1, approval of minutes of the special meeting held July 22, 2024.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, is there support? Supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any dissent?
Roll call.
Oh, that's right.
Councilwoman Baumann. Councilman Hart.
Abstained due to absence.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item 1A. Just a moment here. Approval of proposal.
Study session minutes. You have the minutes.
Say again?
Study session minutes?
New business, 1A.
1A, okay. Got it. Good. Go ahead. Carry on.
1A is approval of proposal for professional services associated with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update. Administration is seeking approval to award the 2025 through 2029 Parks and Rec Master Plan Project to McKenna in a total amount not to exceed $30,000.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Baumann. Is there support? Supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
I would like to have an answer, response for it.
Kyle, can you...
Through the chair, and can Kyle respond to the question?
Through the chair. Thank you for the question, Mr. Warren. What you guys have in front of you guys today is the approval of the contract for the professional services for McKenna to update the master plan. The five-year master plan concludes at the end of this calendar year. It was a 2020 to 2024 master plan. So it is time that the city updates that master plan. Every five years, that's when the five-year master plan is up. Just so that everybody's aware, the master plan for Parks and Recreation is an eligibility requirement to obtain MDNR grants. So if we want any MDNR funding down the road, an updated master plan is required through the council, approval of the council.
Any other questions? Is there any questions from the supporter? Any additional questions, discussion from the council? Any discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Okay, hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business, item 1B, formerly known as Consent J. Adoption of Ordinance 29W451, an ordinance to amend the master fee schedule pertaining to the Planning and Building Department. This was introduced July 15, 2024.
Is there a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski? Is there support? Supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker? Okay, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sampi, for moving this off of consent and adding it to new business. Once again, we're looking at an item that would affect the homeowners and residents and potentially new businesses as they look to come into our city and have to get different kinds of inspections and whatnot. So I think at this time, what I would like, Council President, if I may, through the chair, defer to Director Ayub so that he can give the public a bit of an explanation as to what those fees may look like for this meeting.
Sure.
Sure, I'd love to. Good evening, City Council. So this involves an increase primarily with some additions, but mostly increases to the building and planning department fees. They haven't been adjusted comprehensively since 2010. It's best practice to update and look at your fees on an annual basis. There was one broad-ranging update to the entire master fee schedule involving all departments throughout the city. That was a 3% increase across the board last year, again, to try and cover inflation. The building department and the planning department have had fees that don't align with communities' size for quite some time. That was one of the first things I noticed when I started working here, and now it's starting to impact budget and operations. The building department fees, for example, are so low that they do not cover the cost of the actual inspectors that go out for inspections. Planning fees don't cover the planning commission stipend with the raise that was just increased for the meetings. And it did not, or barely covered it before when you add in the public notices that have to go out per state requirements. So what we're trying to do here is basically take this burden off of the taxpayers so they don't have to cover development costs and put it back on the developers or anyone else that's doing improvements to their property, which is standard. We also, on the website a few days ago, noticed the public that we're doing this. If approved tonight, and this will go into effect September 9th, so the public has some time to better understand what those fee increases look like. That'll also give us time to update our application and work with the clerk's office to post the new fees on UNICODE. Happy to answer any questions that you have additionally.
Council President, I have just one more question, please. You know, I think one of the residential fees that we see most often is the certificate of occupancy. So could you elaborate on what that now looks like for people wishing to live in our city?
The certificate of occupancy, I do not have that in front of me. I can try and find it real quick. Could you give me a moment? I have a ton of other increases that have happened that are much greater than the certificate of occupancy, if you want to hear those.
No, Director Ayub, that's okay. It's just one of the ones that, you know, happen most often, especially when people want to come to Westland and make it home.
Yeah, so, for example, the rental certifications, those have increased from 160 to 175, 214 to 250, 107 to 125. Those are some of the rental property recertifications. There have been some larger increases, not in the rental and the reoccupations for new homeowners, but definitely on the commercial side, there's been between 30, 25, and 50% increases on the commercial side and industrial side.
Well, hopefully, you know, this will bring things into alignment, and I look forward to the day where we're utilizing some of our own building inspectors, as we have discussed during the budget session. So hopefully, we won't have to continue to, you know, raise these fees, you know, year after year. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any discussion from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion? Yes, Pro Terry.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Director Ayub. Him and I spoke before the meeting. I spoke to the mayor, and I thought it was really important to give the opportunity for those that are in the audience and watching at home to just understand that it has been a while since we've updated this fee schedule. So as mentioned, on the Building and Planning Department website, there is the date effective September 9th, which will allow people, if they visit the page, to see that we are updating the fee schedule. So Director Ayub, I know you said that there was a couple of them that were more substantial. If you have that information in front of you, I don't know if you wanted to give you the opportunity to share it just for those at home and in the audience, they might be interested in kind of seeing more of the larger jump.
Yeah, I did take note of the larger increases in case the council wanted to know. So the administrative fee for building permits is increasing from $100 to, I'm sorry, from $40 to $100. This is partly to cover that inspection fee that I mentioned earlier. It's not currently fully covered right now. There are some big increases in the planning commission fees, including the site plan review and special land use, which right now are combined into one fee of $695, and those are broken out. Site plan will now be $1,000. That's a 30% increase. Special land use will also be $1,000, which is also a 30% increase. The rezoning will be increasing 25% from $910 to $1,200. There are some that do not exist today, such as the site plan review administratively. That is $500. Advertising public notices for a case that has already been through the process that needs to go again. We did not previously charge for that. The public noticing charge is about $200, so we're charging that amount. The zoning verification letter is currently about $30. That doesn't cover my time working on it, which is exclusively my time working on it, and that's increasing to $75, a 50% change. Those are some of the big-ticket items.
Thank you. Thank you for highlighting that as well, too. I appreciate just getting the record and clarity for those that perhaps maybe come into our website. So I'm obviously in support of this, as we spoke earlier. And just knowing that we are going to be more in line with cities around us, municipalities that may have already their fee structure at that level, it's good to know that we're kind of taking a look and making sure we're at benchmark. So thank you for your work on this, too.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Is there any additional discussion from the council?
I do have a question for you, Mo. So this is obviously one of the more significant changes we made to this fee structure in a long time. And with big change, obviously comes consternation on developers, residents, parks. You know, hey, when I developed in the city the last time, your fee structure was this. Now I notice it's jumped up significantly. We're obviously not going to have a full response or full answers within the first couple of months of rolling this new fee structure out. But let's say four to six months in, I think it would be germane to, you know, provide council an update on what the overall resident and, you know, petitioner building response is to the new fee structure and how it's working out for us financially. So if there is the opportunity, let's say six months down the line, to just kind of get a reevaluation of where the new fee structure is at, what the feedback has been, and what the, you know, the, lack of a better term, the revenue generation compared to where we were at previously, getting some, you know, metrics to compare where we were at, and what the feedback is to where we're going here would be, I think, helpful and appreciative just so, you know, we have some data and information to know how this is being rolled out and what the response is to it. So if we can have like a six-month benchmark, I think that'd be helpful and appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item 2. Approval of minutes of the study session held July 22, 2024.
Is there a motion? Motion from Councilman Hornbuckle and supported by Councilwoman Baumann. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Abstained due to absence.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item 3. Confirmation of appointment of Juanita Francis Obi to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council to fill an unexpired term, with the term effective upon confirmation and to expire December 31, 2025.
So moved.
Support.
There is a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any discussion from the supporter?
Thank you. Council, I would encourage you to support Juanita Francis Obi on this appointment. She's been involved in the community for as long as I can, yeah, as long as I can remember, 25 years. So she's got a really good background on the city. She is working with our children already as a substitute teacher. She does her own African dance. She brings a lot of cultural experience traveling around the world. So I'm really excited to have her be a part of this advisory council and work with our Parks and Rec advisors to see kind of activities that we can bring. So I will be in support of this, and I want to thank her for stepping up with her busy schedule, too, for saying that she'll be willing to be a part of it.
Okay. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to say thank you, Juanita, for being willing to serve. We appreciate you. Thanks.
Is there any additional discussion from the council? I, too, want to just, you know, extend my thanks and gratitude for you stepping up and serving. We're always talking about how we need more people on boards and commissions and good, well-qualified people. So thank you for taking time out of your day and your life to contribute back to the city among the many other things that you already do for the city of Westland and have done, as the pro tem highlighted. So thank you for that. Really appreciate it. And is there any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. Stand up and be recognized. Okay. We will now move on to public comment. Everyone wishing to speak before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and a person who questions may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone, public comment on my right? Yes, Ms. Francis.
Good evening. Thank you again, everyone, for this approval and miracle comment for the appointment. I really appreciate it. As a former manager at Parks and Recs, former YMCA director in Westland, and on many community boards that supported our youth, it's just a pivot move for me, and it's an honor to serve officially. As a longtime resident, 25 years with Westland, I just want to say I am so excited. We are alive again. This weekend was beyond amazing. One of the best, one of the best Blues Brews and Barbecue we have ever had. So, kudos to everybody that partook in that, especially to Mr. Adams and Mr. Mulligan, their hard work, and the sponsors, and everybody. It was beyond amazing. Thank you. Westland is thriving, and so many families are going to be coming in here, so get ready for the increase. I just have one last thing to comment on. Our daughter lives at Woodcrest Apartments here in Westland, and the fungi is so bad there. She has mushrooms growing inside of the apartment. I reached out to our councilwoman, Hunt Sampe. She reached out to planning and building. They went there. They don't even have an occupancy license for 156 residents. They went and put bleach on the mushroom. They did not pull up the carpet. They won't move her to another place, but everything there is pretty much condemned. It shouldn't be habitable. They're not doing anything. She's been living here since last year. She does carry an EpiPen. It is so dangerous, and the fungi is so high. I would love for the city to step up with following through when they do these inspections and go to these properties and make sure that these owners get the right licenses to have people to stay there, as well as make the improvements. It's been two years since the last inspection, and nothing has been done.
Great. And if you want to stay after, too, I know I read Pro Tem's email, but I'd be happy to chat with you more about it as well.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, public comment. Anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Okay. Good evening, council. I have two questions. One was, Blues Brews Barbecue was awesome. It was really good. My question is, you guys did a lot of, and I don't mean to speak on your behalf, Ms. Obi, but I have to speak on my behalf, and since our names are in this resolution. Mr. Pascal is not here, but I have a copy of the resolution that you guys passed about the Women of Westland. And in this, it says, "Women of Westland like Ruby Richards, Lori Wilson, and Juanita Francis Obi successfully championed the creation of the city's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission in 2020 and the DEI Department in 2022." Okay. I understand why that might be there like that, but who is getting these awards? Who is going to be recognized as a Woman of Westland? This is my question I'd like to know, because I don't see any of the three people named here on this flyer. I've been in the city, I'm 70 years old, just turned that on the 21st, but I have worked for the city. I have sat on the planning commission for almost 20 years. I'm on the city's Ethics Board Commission. I have volunteered to do all kinds of things. I have worked during elections for, till my shoes fell off. Where are the people that are in this resolution on this paper? And this was sent out, and it's on the city website. That's what I'd like to know. Thank you. See, I didn't even mention them, speed humps.
Public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Gross-Jasik, and I have the pleasure of being the Special Olympics softball coach for Wayne Westland, Special Needs, and I would like to invite all of you to come and watch our athletes sometime. We practice on Tuesdays at John Glenn at 6:30, and then we are in state games at Canton Softball. On Michigan Avenue on August 23rd. I can send you an email with the times, but I know our athletes would love your support. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'd appreciate the email, too, so thank you for that, and thank you for bringing awareness to it. Is there anyone else, public comment on my left? Mr. Warren.
This is to further the resolution that you approved in July about the Women of Westland. There were two women in the creation. The first discussion is in regards to this. There was Gina Stewart, president of Western Wayne NAACP, but she's not a resident of Westland. And there was Belba Wilson, who's a pastor and vice president of the NAACP, who is not a resident of Westland. So, these three women have been noted here. Yeah, they work hard in the city, but they were not involved in the creation of the DEI in its initial talks. So, therefore, Mr. Pascal, if he would, and one of the things I try to tell folks, since I've been here 45 or 50 years, involved in a lot of commissions, if you want to know something, ask people who've been involved in the community. And his issue is, he's only been there like three years, three years, and he's never visited the south end of the Westland, never came to the homeowners association. And another thing that's what's happening here is that this department of the DEI, it is not the commission. All these events, you've been seeing that the commission is held, it's been the department, it is Mr. Pascal operating that. The commission doesn't know anything about these events until they happen, and they get invited as the last entity into these events. So, there's been some confusion in the community about who it is, and it's not the commission. The commission was formed that out of racism is a public health hazard, and that's our commission's mission, okay? And so, you've never heard that issue out of the chief operating officer. He's never talked directly about what the commission's object was. But I just want to make clear to you that although these women are, they're great women, I know them, they weren't in the creation of the DEI, because I was on that board, and we had those, we had those discussions, and then we moved on. So, so I hope that somebody will talk to Pascal, and maybe you can correct it, because it's just a falsehood that's being put out. If anybody in the community reads it, it's just a falsehood. But like I said, no reflection on the good work that these ladies do. And so therefore, quietly, as kept as you can see right now, there will be actually no African-American women, basically, of Women of Westland who are being honored. And the Afro-American women have done a lot in regards to this city, and he's just passed, passed over. And so, that shows you what the chief operating officer of the DEI does. He passes basically over the Afro-American women and just put
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Other folks on there.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll be back.
That's notated. Thank you. Is there anyone else, public comment on my right? Anyone else on my left? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none. We will move on to comments from the administration.
Well, thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, everybody in attendance and everybody watching. First of all, I, we were really happy with Blues Brews and Barbecue. I think the vast majority of people had a great time. My family and I had a great time. I want to thank the entire city staff, the Downtown Development Authority, which is the main sponsor of the event, the Westland City Council, who supported the event overwhelmingly, and I think every council member was in attendance, which is great. John Witsen Associates, which is the company that does arts, beats, and eats out in Royal Oak. We partnered with them this year to make the event even bigger and better. I think people were really excited about the way it was handled. The drone show on Friday night had a record crowd of 6,000 people. I know it was a huge crowd on Saturday night as well. I don't have that head count yet, but I'm working on it. A few people, other than those that I'd like to thank, directors, Devin Adams, who put in a huge amount of work getting that together, Kyle Mulligan and Alex Garza as well, for all their hard work. Really, I should go down the line and thank all city staff that were a part of it. I won't do that for the sake of time, but the city really came together to do this. City employees, our firefighters, our police officers, police chief, fire chief, the directors, pretty much everybody pitched in and helped out. Our DPS was there working hard. The ton of volunteers involved with the event, a bunch of civic groups, including the JCs. I want to thank Becca in particular from the JCs. She's the chairman of the board there, who helped promote the event quite a bit with me on Saturday morning on TV. So, I want to thank Becca for being a great cheerleader for Westland, even though she's a Garden City resident. And then, of course, all the sponsors of the event, which I won't name right now, but we will at a later date. I want to thank them for all their support of the event as well. I'll keep my comments pretty short tonight, because I know the city clerk has an early morning with the election tomorrow, so, so good luck to everybody. A couple of construction projects in town. Wayne County will be reservicing Wayne Road from Glenwood to Palmer. That one's already kicking off this week. Construction began today. It'll be completed by winter. And the improvement project includes concrete repair, curb enhancements, sidewalk and ramp upgrades, improved signage, and pavement markings. One lane of traffic will be open in each direction for the duration of the project. An update on Mayor Monroe Bridge, this is one that I get asked about every single day. Wayne County is still experiencing delays in the project, unfortunately, and they're looking at a winter time opening. Unfortunately, this is not a City of Westland construction project, so we don't have authority to hurry them up whatsoever. Wayne County is working with a State of Michigan contractor, because the funded is, the project is funded in part by State of Michigan money, and it's just been a heck of a delay. It's a big inconvenience for everybody. I'm very sorry to the people who live in the area. We're going to stay on top of them and continue to bug them about speeding this up and getting this done, but it's, it's been a pain in the neck for the entire city, so we're sorry about that. CSX, which is a railroad company, has informed us they'll be doing crossing work in the upcoming weeks on Hicks, Glenwood, and Palmer roads. The Hicks Road Crossing will be closed from August 7th to 12th, Glenwood and Palmer from August 12th to 17th. The city's going to be doing Marquette Road between Wayne and Wildwood, two inches of asphalt and concrete curb repairs, August 19th to 21st. So, keep that in mind if you live along Marquette, which is my side of town. We've had several great events that I've already mentioned, a couple ones coming up. Our next mayor's listing tour is going to be Tuesday, August 13th, 5:30 PM at the Westland Historic Village Park. That should be a nice venue for us. It's a great amenity in town that doesn't get used enough. Want to see more activities over at the historic village park, and I'm excited to have the public come join me there for some great interchange between me and my administration and the public. Our Smooth Summer Nights Concert Series at Central City Park had great attendance this year. I was able to meet Motown legend Martha Reeves. I posted that on one of my Facebook pages. It was cool to have her hanging out in the crowd and enjoying the music along with the rest of us. The farmer's market had a great season this year. They had their annual Kids' Day event, and the participation was excellent. Next Thursday, August 15th, is Health and Fitness Day. STEP, which is Services to Enhance Potential, will have a free drive-in movie and classic car cruise on Wednesday, August 7th, at 4:00 PM at 450 South Benoy. There's going to be food vendors, karaoke, and then ET, the movie, will be shown on a 50-foot, 55-foot inflatable screen. The Norway Citizens Council will be hosting their Back-to-School Extravaganza and Outdoor Movie on August 9th at Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center at 5:30 PM. There'll be food, a backpack giveaway while supplies last, and the movie begins at 6:45. Please bring your own lawn chair and blanket and bug spray if you need it, and there'll be a lot of volunteers, and I want to thank them for all their hard work on these events. We had ribbon cuttings this, last couple of weeks for the Ray Event Studio right at Wayne and Warren Road, and then the new Westland office of the Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce. So, congratulations to both of those groups. I know there were some questions tonight for the administration. I don't have the information to answer, in particular, the one for Mr. Warren tonight about the flyer. I don't know which city staff member made the flyer. It may have been our DEI director, but I'll get that information, and we'll look into it. And that's all for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any comments this evening from the city attorney's office?
Nothing this evening, other than good luck to the clerk and all his volunteers for tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. We will now begin council comments this evening with Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Respect for the clerk and all of the other election workers. I'm going to defer my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. Please remember, do the Westland Public Library survey. They've asked several times, and they want that done, so they can improve the library. And best luck to the city clerk and all the volunteers for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilwoman Baumann.
Thank you. I just, I want to say congratulations, and thank you to Juanita, and, what's I, is there anything else I haven't heard? I think that was all I wrote on my thing. So, again, good luck for tomorrow. It's going to be a long day, but hopefully we'll get results early and after the evening. I know, silly question, but thank you, and we'll, everyone go out
Put them in the AM, huh?
Everyone go, vote, vote. If you haven't voted, please vote.
Okay, thank you. We will now hear from Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to extend to the mayor and the staff. You can let them know, Mayor. I was really impressed with the Blues Brews. I think the partnership that you guys did with people that do arts, beats, and eats, the results are definitely remarkable. So, twice the size of what it used to be, and I was impressed, thoroughly impressed. So, good job to your entire staff.
Thank you.
Very good job. Good luck tomorrow, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
If you need anything, don't call me. Thank you.
We will now hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
I want to echo what everyone said about Blues Brews Barbecue. Great job to the administration, but I do want to highlight the volunteers, you know, those people that volunteer. They did a tremendous job. It was perfect. I seen where people were using their tables, got their trash, and as soon as they finished, someone was wiping the table off. You don't even get that at the restaurant we pay at. So, the service from the volunteers were, was great. So, I do want to highlight and make sure the volunteers get credit for their hard work. I'm going to keep it short. Good luck tomorrow, and I'll see you guys in two weeks. Thank you.
Okay. We'll now hear from Pro Tem Sampe.
Okay, thank you so much. I will also keep mine short. I know it's been echoed about Blues Brews and Barbecue, which, as mentioned, the volunteers are always the ones that probably deserve the most. Kudos, because they are volunteering their time, and it's, it was so hot this weekend. So, thank you to all the volunteers that volunteered for your charities. And I also agree with my colleagues, the event went off fantastic. I did highlight just one issue with the mayor's office, and I think that we're going to probably get it addressed. Security was a little bit too much, but other than that, I think that things went great, great event, great partnership. As mentioned by Mr. Warren, so I don't really know too much about this event. I was asked to just do a welcome, so I don't know who's getting awards, or I don't really know too much about what's going on, but I know Director Aze mentioned that he will be getting information out soon, so I would encourage you to maybe reach out to him. Maybe he can give you a little background. I know that the event is free. It's on the 27th from 7:00 to 9:00, so he had mentioned that he was trying to get together some speakers and performers. So, I think it's going to be a great event, though. I am looking forward to it. So, it's here at City Hall. Again, it is free. So, I wanted to also wish the clerk good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the results, and good luck to all the candidates, and we'll see you in two weeks. So, I think our next meeting is on the 19th at 7:00. And, oh, one more thing, too. The Special Olympics, if you would be happy to share that with Council President or myself, we'll get it out to the council. I, my brother participated in Special Olympics every year, so definitely would love to get the information. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pro Tem. I will be brief as well, and I really mean that this time. So, just a quick thank you to everyone, all the volunteers, the So, just a quick thank you to everyone, all the volunteers, the Westland Democratic Club, the Westland Area JCs, the Civitan Club, and all the civic groups and community members who volunteered their time to make Blues Brews a huge success. Without all of you and all the work that you do, it would not be as successful as it has been in years past, under Mayor Wild and Mayor Londo, and this year, under Mayor Coleman. I want to thank the mayor and his administration for all the hard work that they did making this happen, specifically Director Mulligan and Director Adams for all the pre-planning and partnering with John Wick's and Associates to make it a really bigger, better event than always. Thank you to our first responders, our police and our fire for making it a safe event. We know, you know, there's always something that happens at Blues Brews and BBQ this year, it sounded like it was largely incident-free. The few incidents that, you know, did happen were taken care of pretty promptly and pretty, pretty quickly. I know there was one specific incident where there was not direct communication over, from the security staff, to our first responders to get over there as quick as they could, and I think tightening that up for next year will be better, but to all of our city staff, our first responders, our police and fire, to make it a safe event, because it will only be enjoyable if it is a safe event for our families and residents. All the work that they did to make it a safe event is great, and then our DPS and the Park Rangers, all the setting up and breaking down throughout the weekend, truly appreciate all of your support as well. And then, lastly, I, too, will extend my well wishes, best of luck to the clerk's office for a successful election tomorrow. And thank you for managing all the early voting, because we know that the election started weeks and weeks ago as well. So appreciate all the work that you and your team have done going up to this as well.
I do, too. Thank you.
And with that is our motion to adjourn. Thank you.